They've ran itself out before the fair.
Nobody popped on the weekend, man.
Uh, no, they say on that.
Ninety-two or something. It was seventy percent humidity. And it's terrible.
Yeah, are you done, plan?
I got nine acres to reclaim.
I thought that was me over there. Oh, that's the microphone.
All right, it's five o'clock. I'll call this meeting over. We'll take it for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, like to welcome everybody here to the June County Council meeting. First piece of business up on the agenda is the minutes that were mailed out or emailed out to you. We'll need a motion to approve those as presented. Or if anybody sees a change in them, we will approve with the modification or change.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Dave Frumey makes a motion unpro- approved. Do I have a second?
No, I'm second.
Brian Grollik's sentence. Any further discussion, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And it's approved. All right, next up, additionals. First, these have, uh, these have all been advertised. They're ready to do business here tonight. First thing up, thirty thousand dollars for the, uh, for the sheriff's cop car. They, they've actually already, the guy already actually gave them the car. So they're, they have it and they're getting ready to put it on the road. So we just need to approve the thirty thousand out of county general for the sheriff's car. Do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion, Aaron.
Steve Hoff makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Justin Gross seconds. Any discussion, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, next is going down here, um, county general, circuit court. Judge was here last time. They've had to have a few trials, needed an interpreter. And then he's got some travel here, so four thousand, five thousand, we can take those together. Judge, anything you want to add?
You know, whenever officers stop people on the interstate, we get, we get a lot of international people coming up and down the interstate. And we've had to have interpreters for Farsi, Haitian Creole, these are recent ones. Uh, when we have, uh, Spanish, we have interpreter days where a Spanish individual that cannot speak English. And sometimes we'll have twenty to thirty in the courtroom. And so Language Line is a state-paid database that we use for interpreting. But it, it can't handle like a bulk case load like that. So we have to bring in the individual interpreters. It's more expensive. Language Line also, we were notified, like most things with the state, uh, they're going to quit providing that for free. So we're going to start paying for that, which, uh, so that's why, that's the reason for the interpreter request. In our conferences, um, we're kind of at the mercy of where they hold them. Our next big conference this spring, or this spring, this fall, is at Port Lane. So we're down to thirty-five dollars under conferences, discouraged probation. Our staff, which now have to go to conferences too, and, uh, the judges.
All right, guys, uh, we've advertised this. We heard the judge's request. Uh, he's trying to run the, uh, the court system, so, um, look for a motion to approve it.
I'll approve the nine thousand.
Dave Dogg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Susan Harris seconds. Any further discussion or questions for the judge? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, judge. All right, that's Captain Alden County Generals. All right, guys, uh, look through your thing. Next, we got, uh, from the highway department, uh, they were here last ti- time to talk about this. As for the United Consulting Bridge, uh, contract to keep our bridges inspected in good shape. Uh, they need a hundred thousand. I'll have to queue bridge fund additional to, uh, to get this, uh, done for the year with United Consulting for the contraction services. Uh, Dale said he couldn't make it here tonight, so I told him, he was here last time, we could go ahead and take care of this, so. Any questions? I'll handle them. If, I'm hearing questions, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve the hundred thousand.
Brian Grollik makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Aaron.
Steve Hoff seconds. Any other discussion, board? Hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next thing down here, um, there you go, um, out of the, uh, Highway eleven sixty-six capital light thing. We, they, they brought this quote in here, Mark, so we asked Mark to get some more quotes. He presented four quotes, uh, at the, um, commissioner meeting today. Um, the commissioners took this one, but we have one, the original one, for eighty, for eighty-three thousand, three hundred, uh, from Dave Brothers Construction, um. Then we have one for seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars from Gasser Electric, um.
And a side note to that, that was bid as a non-service or a ser- non-service entrance, uh, switch. And they said to put a service entrance switch, uh, like all the others that were about to add thirty-eight hundred dollars to it. So I put it close to eighty.
Okay.
That's my information.
Yep, then we got one here from Punda Electric, um, I had to do, add it all up, at about eighty-one thousand dollars. Looks like, uh, for that one. And then we have one, uh, from KC Electric, um, from Tull City. And it looks like seventy-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents. Uh, labor material for a hundred KW, uh, generator with five hundred and ten gallon fuel tank, seventy-two hour unload, a hundred percent. Uh, new bit service entry cabinet, eight hundred, uh, amp ATS to replace switch. Uh, provide frame to just, uh, take the old generator out, put the new one in, remove existing eight hundred amp service, uh, switch. And, um, then replace the two PVC feeders, um, and we can put our own diesel fuel in it. So, uh, the, the commissioners took the quote to, today for the, uh, I'm guessing the seventy-four thousand, uh, four hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents is what I was told. Um, so I, we're going to move forward on this. We would need to, uh, approve, um, the, uh,
seven, seventy-five thousand.
Melissa wants to just do seventy-five thousand in case the bill comes in, um, a little bit different, which, which would be great.
What size is that currently there?
One hundred KW.
Is the current one?
So this is the same size one then?
It'll be automatic versus manual too, so any time later, it'll come off.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'd obtain a motion or ask for a motion for seventy-five thousand to move forward with the, the new generator?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Justin Gross made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Dave Dogg goes seconds.
It's gonna take a lot of money.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody opposed there, were they? Okay, so, all right, motion carries seventy-five thousand for the new, we'll get, uh, we'll get that. Melissa, here's, here's those things back, so I don't pretend to get them up in the air. All right, guys, that's got us, uh, through the additionals here. We'll, we'll move over to the transfers, um, here, we're even, we're ready to, to take action on, so. Uh, first up, um, yeah, all right, Mindy's here. Uh, Mindy wants to make a couple changes, uh, here, increase, uh, billing clerk, um, salary. And decrease, uh, the nurses there, I think, so.
Mindy? Yeah, that was in the HF I funding, um, we broke that in there to help cover costs. Did we ever lost the immunization grant? Well, we did, we didn't lose it, the state had it. Um, in fact, the last three months of it, we were not allowed to use. Um, and so moving forward, we're not going to be able to get the sixty, seventy thousand dollars that we did. Um, I did sign a letter of intent for like four thousand dollars is all that they offered. And I don't know if we're going to get that. I haven't heard anything. I've emailed and stuff. Um, so lovely, kind of planned ahead, and that's kind of what some of this funding was in there for. Um, this is to help cover the expenses on the billing clerk position, finish out from now to the end of the year. And then whenever budget time comes around, then we'll, I'm allowed to discuss on the HF I funding.
All right, guys, any questions for Mindy?
How's next year's money going to be, less than what we have?
We're only going to about a hundred and three thousand, so.
Less?
That'd be a lot moving around.
I'm not surprised, you know, it's coming.
So the HF I's, a hundred and three next year?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, we can put some stuff back on eleven fifty-nine if we had to.
Well, this is a good balance.
Yeah, and we lost the immunization grant, you know, that was sixty-nine and seven thousand. They covered a lot of the immunization.
Right.
The cost of running it and everything, so I had to kind of balance out and try to squeeze it out. We have a, a lot to talk about.
Do you, uh, you don't think there's a chance at all, like, getting immunization grant back?
Uh, well, if, if we do, like, they offered like four thousand dollars. It's not going to be enough to cover.
Cover the program.
Yeah, to cover all of everything, so.
Yeah, the state's Medicaid budget went up, ending June thirtieth. It's a billion dollars over budget. So they spent a billion dollars more in last fiscal year on Medicaid than what was budgeted two years ago. A billion dollars.
Yeah.
There'd be some cutting.
They, they've got pretty generous with their handouts, really.
Yeah, I know, they were.
All right, guys, if we don't, nobody else had any questions for Mindy? We'll, I'll take them or ask for a motion to, uh, approve this, uh, transfer here, uh, for forty-four oh four.
I'll make a motion.
Dave Frumey makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian Grollik's seconds. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfer approved. All right, yeah, we just, 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 uh, the budget time just lets know what you need. Maybe if, before, if you get it together, you want me to go over or something, just call me, I'll come in and look at it.
Yeah, well, I, I've already driven into Melissa's, so I believe you guys come in the building, come see me, go across the room. And I'll try to explain the best I can, send the thoughts behind, when I need to, to get.
I get what we need to do. Okay, all right, sounds good. Mindy, thank you.
Right around the corner.
Yep, all right, that's got that one. Uh, next, guys, we got this quote to fix the, uh, generator, um, for, um, sixteen thousand, um, one hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents is what the, the transfers, uh, for. Scott's here from the sheriff's department, uh, if Sherry's, uh, had trained tonight, said she couldn't be here, so. Uh, if anybody's got a question for Scott, he's, uh, here to answer those. And if not, we'll, uh, we'll look for a motion to, uh, approve the transfer to get the generator fixed. Which is way better than buying one for seventy-five thousand dollars again.
For now.
For now.
Make the motion to approve that transfer.
All right, Steve made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dave Frumey seconds. Any questions, concerns? All right, we got a motion and second. Everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, transfer approved. All right, uh, judge's, uh, is, uh, he, he missed the left, but anyways. Oh, he's still here, okay, he was hiding behind Mark. Hide, okay. Uh, he's, he needs to increase his, uh, computer warranty, uh, supplemental maintenance and decrease office supplies. Or is your judge?
Yeah, uh, we got that new system, thanks to you all helping us. We got that grant, and I think you had to appropriate upfront, and the grant's going to cover everything. Well, like all things, the grant's like six hundred dollar short, so we're, we're looking to do that money to get the shortfall taken care of. But I will tell you that, that evidence presentation system is fantastic. Um, so thank you for funding that. If you want to come up sometime, we'll show you how it works. It's got an Elmo on the side, which basically we, we've, we've put down any kind of piece of paper, um, firearm, weapon, whatever it might be, and it'll project it up on the big screen for the jury. You can read it clearly. We just use it for a motion, uh, to surprise hearings, so it has body cam footage where officers, uh, went into a hotel room and you can clearly hear all the audio and everything. It's going to be so good for the jurors, so. Thank you for helping us with that, but that's what that shortfall was for, the transfer request.
All right, thank you. Sorry to see you back here, judge.
That's all right.
Uh, all right, uh, so you all heard the jur- the judge's, uh, request there, need for the, uh, six hundred dollars to make that work. Sounds like the system is a good investment of our money, so. And if anybody want to make a motion to approve the six hundred dollars for the judge?
I'll make a motion.
Susan Harris makes a motion. Do I have a second? Justin Gross seconds. Any other questions or concerns for the judge? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And always give credit where credit's due. Shout out to Prosecutor Bennett, because she, she did a lot of the work on that too. So there'll be work to go and get that, that piece of equipment, so it's, it's going to be real nice. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, judge. All right, that's got us through our transfers. Scott, did you have anything else? Okay, you're, you're just on the agenda every month, so we did, just checking you out. But if you want, when you had something, we were going to give you the opportunity to be the shining star here, sir. Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, EMA, um, I think this is two things. Seth's got something here about the boat, and then I think Mark wants to talk to us about the VHS system for the radios.
All right, much easier. Yes.
Or get any revenue from yours.
I know, but I do want to thank you all. We did, the boat has come in, we've been out on that. It's really nice to have a, a piece of, uh, of equipment that works really good. And we're still in the warm-up stages of the engine, so we have to have ten hours, and we have like four hours left. So, um, we still, right now, we have to warm it up five minutes before we can, um, take it out. So we're still working on all that, but we're, we're getting there. Um, but on the flip side of that, um, you know, we replaced the old coastal, so I do want to sell that and put a reserve of twelve hundred on that. And we do have a really nice canopy that's on that boat. Um, I'm also asking that the money that comes in from the boat that comes back to EMA, so we can get some more equipment for water rescue. We are having radios that's going to be put on there, um, and we have the equipment that we need, so.
Any, any county property sold goes back into the general fund and then we'll reappropriate it.
Okay, okay.
It's cleaner that way, leaves a dent.
Did the commissioners revert this? Did you ask them about it?
Yes.
Okay.
Today.
Good deal.
All right, yeah. So, yeah, we'll go ahead and sell it.
Yep, perfect.
It's their equipment, so, yeah, they're, they're on board with it, we're on board with it. Yeah, once, once whatever it brings, just let us know. And then we'll do an addition, because like Dave said, we, just to make it our county easy, we put all of it back in the general fund. And whatever it brings, we'll reappropriate that amount to you. Or if you need a little bit more at that time, we'll do additional, make a hope.
We should be, yeah, all right, thank you.
If we're Philantenders that week, we'll.
Hey, I'm just happy to generosity with the, uh, I'm really, really appreciate it.
Made our volunteer day, too.
Yes.
Yeah. Sounds like you're out riding around, you're getting some sunscreen.
Yes, I agree.
All right, now up is Mark Lautner. There's an email in here, guys, that we got yesterday from Mark, um, that goes over this.
Yes.
He, uh, but I'm going to give him the floor. He can explain to you what we need to do, uh, and kind of the timeline. He would like to see this completed in, um, and then, um, I, I might have another comment or two.
Good. Thank you all for, uh, how we speak tonight, uh, worked long and hard on this, and, uh, what's going on? Try to brief it up in the email there a little bit, without getting in too much into the weeds. We're at a state of, uh, did a lot of repairs to a repeater site, uh, and there's a part up there, forget what it's called, but anyway, it's, uh, it's no longer manufactured. It's no longer manufactured anymore. Uh, there's no more parts for that, for that particular multicast system. During this, uh, we had a fire chiefs meeting, uh, later on that week. Been in contact with some of you guys and commissioners as well by telephone and to keep you up to date as much as I can. But we had a fire chiefs meeting, we brought this up, and I said, you know, here at Santa Claus at, uh, one Wednesday evening, we talked about it. We need to get the, uh, they decided to get the radio committee, uh, to meet again, which consisted of fire, fire department, EMS, EMA, uh, dispatch, and as well as EMA. So, but anyway, this VHS system is used for, for communications amongst the fire EMS, EMA, different ones. And also for, uh, weather sirens to be put out. It's at an end of life. It's had, it's had a good, useful life. Our infrastructure is there, tower sites and things like that. You know, I did reach out to some vendors, three or four of them, I think I may have mentioned it there. You know, uh, you're getting prices anywhere, just ballpark prices, a, a minimum of a hundred, all the way up to a hundred seventy-five to two hundred for, for a single channel analog simulcast repeater system at two sites, St. Minor and Christie. And they're saying with the propagation studies that they can see where this is going to land at. Also, the, the, uh, radio committee met and we decided that, uh, it would be a performance spec if allowed to go for bids for something like this, which the commissioners did, uh, the performance spec. It would be public safety grade equipment, if you use routers or microwave, whatever, the fiber for backhaul, uh, to make sure that we get our most bandwidth or above, that some quality here that we can go forward with and everybody be able to use. I can't get away from it because of the, because of the, your analog pagers. We've tried the eight hundred pagers, uh, they didn't work as well as what we thought we did. We've worked long and hard with the absolute integrated public safety commission to work these, along with our, uh, vendors who put these out. They do work, but there were some times where they didn't, and it made EMS very, very nervous. Uh, and I, we could get, people are, some of them are used to picking up that VHF handle, even though the eight hundred's right here. And that's what they want to use, so. Uh, I, I think we're at a point of replacement at this, and this is why we come here to you for money, asking for money. I don't know the exact amount, but, uh, we did present this to the commissioners, and they, uh, agreed to put it out for, for bids, and then looking to see what you want to do with this. And, uh, willing to answer any questions.
All right, first thing, when we get this, can we like, make sure that they can talk in St. Minor and like?
That's.
Because those are the two things I get complaints all the time from the fire people up there. Yep, they can't talk. So like, whatever we build out this time, we have to make sure we can talk from the river bottoms, and then we have to be able to talk in St. Minor.
You bet, absolutely. That's what the, part of the performance spec is. Saturate Spencer County with paging coverage and saturate Spencer County with radio talk coverage back to dispatch. And that was why I wanted the radio committee meeting to meet, because I'm not going to make these decisions alone, you know? Because I need, there's a lot of good people on this committee, a lot of good people in this room, to help me figure this out. For the betterment of, of the county people, that may, may require services and things like this, so. And their full, their full input into this, too, they were there for meetings, so.
Jane, and, and I did talk to Jane, so, you know, EMS director. Uh, she echoed what Mark said. She said that they, it was, it was time for the system to, to get up to standards and that, um, that they definitely use this system, and that they need, they need it to work effectively to, to do their job too, so. Uh, I don't know if Scott and the sheriff, if you all have, if you want to add anything, but.
Well, we're, the deputies and stuff are typically on eight hundred all the time. I mean, they vary rarely. The only time a deputy uses VHF is if he's pulled in with an inmate. The VHF goes into the jail through the dispatch, and they can tell it to open up Sally Port and bring. But that's literally, but they all have that radio in there because they'll monitor what's going on. If there's an EMS run, you know, if it's a critical non-breathing, where they can, because if they're close, they're going to be out.
Yeah.
Yes. And I do keep up that system to the law, VHF, uh, repeater system. You know, in the twenty years that it's been here, done very little to it, because it was a public safety grade type of spec system. But.
What did the, what, what did the commissioners say today to?
Uh, asked my direction, they said, asked me what I wanted to do, and he said, you want to put this for bids or something? I said, yes, I do, I do. And, uh, I don't know how long it'll last, I hope it lasts a long time, really do. Yes, we have backup for, I am responding, uh, you know, we can talk on eight hundred too. Uh, I know the ambulance when they arrive and, and depart the hospitals, they use the eight hundred megahertz system. So, but, uh, the fire departments want to keep up their VHF system.
Okay. Thirteen years ago, you said?
Roughly, I think, well, it might be thirteen to fifteen years ago.
I remember.
And, and the system, oh, yes, me and you very well know how that went, and, uh, uh, was put in for the amount of money that they had. Now, with, with that being said, did you have more, could you put more money to it to make it better? Possibly, I don't know, but, uh.
I echo what Aaron said, I mean, we need to, the St. Minor area, the loose township area, they need to be covered. And if we have to do something a little more to do that, we, we need to do it.
Yes.
So the only other question, and you messaged me back, but just for clarity for everyone here. Whenever I was going to a couple of the meetings last year, when I was able to make it to the chiefs meetings, they were trying to move to primarily an eight hundred system was the big. So that's no longer, they, they don't want to go primarily into that, given the issues with the pagers and.
Right, right now, they're comfortable with the type of mix that they use.
Okay.
Uh, St. Minor got a little more involved with it on the eight hundred system during the search of Perry County. They saw how those radios could work, it's for statewide, you don't want to get in the weeds of another talk group here. And it worked out, they didn't have that particular channel, but they found one to talk on. Uh, but yes, it, it allows, we can talk to other counties on, on either system. And it's a little easier with the, uh, VHF system, because a lot of responders in other counties only have to carry a VHF radio.
Cause that's what.
Sorry, I just want to add, I mean, any radio system put in, I mean, it's not a hundred percent everywhere. So their specs, they advise is up to ninety-five percent coverage. With both systems, you can have redundancy, um, if it will help in that cover. There are certain areas you can, you can hit on VHF, but on eight hundred, you can't.
Yeah.
So obviously, redundancy is very important, especially when you're on scene.
I guess just like a couple of years, or last year, it was like they were trying to go towards like what, the sheriff's department? Ninety-nine percent of the traffic on eight hundred, and you supplement it with this system here. And now it doesn't seem the case, where I was kind of at first, I was like, okay, two hundred thousand dollars put into the system, that I was still under the impression that they were wanting to primarily use that, so, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure, thanks for the question. What's the, uh, what's the timeline to get it, the project?
This is not, I don't want it done today. I, we've got time to work on this. Yes, we are, but I was going to go to the budget committee this year and ask for something for, but it, but it hit us quicker. Just due to the lack of parts being available or even manufactured anymore. I don't know what's.
Completed this year?
Oh, I'd like to see it. Impossible, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that'd be, if I suddenly.
So you, you need a mo- you want a motion, or you need a motion from us today to go ahead and, uh, put this out for the bids?
Yeah, that's.
And then you, would you come back and, I mean, I, I, I mean, I guess Dave and I are owed to, I mean, we, you know, I'm not speaking for everybody here, and you all disagree, you can definitely say so. I mean, we've definitely, I mean, in the past, emergency services needs something, you know, uh, took care of, you know? And Mark and Jane, and a couple of the fire chiefs I talked to, think we need this. Uh, I know Leila uses this too, I think, and so, um, you know, it, it sounds like something we need to do to protect our citizens, you know? So, um, I would be in favor of at least letting Mark get a, get quotes and see what we're up against, and then we'll figure out what we can afford.
Yeah, and I want to add one more thing to that. There's what they call, and I forget the exact name of it, but it's basically a system, as, as, I'd want to add this into the edition of, so, edition one to the bid or whatever. There's what they call a health monitoring system of the radio system. To where a, uh, device watches the power output, power loss. There's what they call a health monitoring system of the radio system to where a, uh, device watches the power output, power loss. I'm not talking about generator power, but other things, the amps and things, without getting into the weeds. Uh, if something goes, uh, looks, looks out of range, out of spec, it will send an email to the radio vendor as well as to myself and dispatch. Also, there will be a monitor, uh, street not near as that big, but, but monitor being to, uh, the dispatch center and the EMA office as well to monitor that system as you can watch it. You know, hey, keying up good, you know, getting out good, what it's supposed to. Uh, but the perk, but the really good thing about that, that helps your ISO rating for the, for the fire departments in this county. It really helps it. Uh, and I don't have any idea what that may cost, maybe to five thousand. I don't know. But could, could the, uh, benefit, fire departments, you know, some of them are on the cusp of, of having one more tenth of a point to put them into better, uh, insurance costs for their residents. And that's something else that I wanted to mention to you too, that I may put in there as a seat, you know, if, if it's worthwhile. But I'm not asking for a Cadillac system. I want to get it done. I want coverage in this saturated in Spencer County.
And there is more than one option, right?
Oh, yes.
For fire, because that's, that's been an issue in the past.
Uh, yes. And that's, that's why this is getting, I've got four, four companies that I think are good, but, uh, we'll get it together and, uh, you know, that's another thing, once this goes, we want to get references for all these companies, you know, where they work, where, what good, you know, uh, to do their due diligence to the council commissioners and the taxpayers of the community as well as to the nine fire departments EMS that I represent.
Okay. All right, guys. Y'all heard Mark's, uh, request. Any other questions for him? If not, I will look for a, uh, motion to, um, uh, I guess for.
Proceed with.
To proceed with any bids, I guess, but we would need to make a motion here for him.
I'll make a motion. We allow Mark to proceed with the tenay bids for the upgrade.
All right.
Second.
Ready for only seconds. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you all of the fire departments. Thank you all for welcoming.
Here's no other questions. Everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
You're always welcome. Any chiefs meeting and radio committees too. So we're going to have them soon on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Um, next, guys, if you look in the, uh, moving on down the agenda, Superior Ag's here. Uh, they, uh, we got this yesterday or the day before here. Uh, there's a thing with the, uh, we're asking to be one for abatement. Um, so, um, anyways, Richard Lloyd's here. Uh, he is the, uh, CEO of, I guess that's the CEO of Superior Ag Cooperative. So.
Superior Ag Resources Cooperative is the official name. Richard Lloyd, CEO. I just wanted to give you some information. I know you got it in your packets, but we are a farmer-owned cooperative in Southern Indiana. Operate thirteen agronomy locations, about six grain receiving facilities. Got a big feed mill up at Dale. You guys helped with the tax abatement program on it about eight years ago. So that was a twenty-four million dollar investment where we combined three, or took three existing feed mills and combined them into one at Dale. That's, that's been a really good, a good project and a good, a good thing for the, for the co-op and also for the, for the community. Um, we, we service about twenty-five hundred, um, cooperative members, farmers, supplying crop inputs, crop protection products, feed for livestock, um, all that, all of that stuff. We're specifically, I mean, as a company, we're about two hundred and fifty employees, um, and that'll climb up to about over three hundred as we get into seasonal, seasonal health in the spring. But specifically in, in Spencer County, we currently employ seventy full-time employees, about thirty-five seasonal employees. The gross wages on an annual basis for those in Spencer County that, that are working here is about five million dollars. Um, full-time jobs include 401K and health insurance and life insurance, living dental, all those things. The project that we're looking at, it's, it's just, just north of here, between here and Grandview, but, um, it's the old, it's the Summit Terminal LLC. Um, in December, we acquired the membership interest in Summit Terminal LLC. So it's, it's wholly owned by the five of co-op and we're looking to, to make an investment there to build a, a state-of-the-art fertilizer, um, distribution facility. Um, we will be building a, uh, we, uh, we've been working on permitting. A big part of what we got here about three weeks ago was the, the, uh, DNR permit to, to be able to build in the, in the floodplain. That took, took a long time to, to get from December to just a couple of weeks ago. Now that we have that, uh, we're working on final plans. So we've split to get the county permit, also, uh, home line security permit and, uh, R and C engineer permit there. So we anticipate to have the permitting, um, to be able to build, start construction by the end of July. Probably on ground day for, um, mid, mid-July. Probably invite y'all out if you want to come, come and see it there. Um, but the facility that we're building is going to be a thirty-two thousand ton storage facility, um, with barge unloading. We'll be able to receive barges there with a receiving system that's rated at six hundred tons an hour. So we'll unload barge approximately three hours. Um, we'll be able to, it'll primarily be, be fed on the Ohio River for fertilizer, for dry fertilizer by barge. It'll also have the ability to receive by truck and then all the outbound will go by truck. So this is a, a fully functioning. It'll be, it'll be able to store and ship straight product, blended product. Um, it'll feed a lot of our Superior Ag locations that are, that are in Southern Indiana. Will do some wholesale to other neighboring co-ops and other, other retailers around the area. Um, but a lot of it will also go to, to Spencer County and the surrounding counties, go directly to field, um, either through our application equipment or, or the growers' application equipment. So we'll be, we'll tender it out to the fields and also allow farmers to come in and pick up directly there. So, um, it'll be a great facility. Today, all of our fertilizer, almost all of it comes in on the Ohio River, on the Kentucky side. If you look on the Kentucky side, Owensboro, Henderson, there's, there's fertilizer plants up and down that river there. Um, we're excited to be able to, to do this in Spencer County, in Indiana, and be able to serve our farmers here. And across the river, we'll, we'll send stuff into Kentucky from Indiana. Um, so we're, we're excited to be able to invest here, here in the county. The overall investment and what's on the, the abatement, um, schedule there, we're looking at, um, fifteen million in investment for real property between the, the land, the building, the, the real property. And then about seven million dollars will be for personal property, mainly the receipt, the barge receiving equipment, the, the equipment to unload in the bins in the, in the facility and then all the blending equipment and kind of loadout equipment. So that's total of twenty-two million broken up between fifteen for the real property and seven for the, for the equipment. Um, there's some drawings in there, um, information about fertilizer plants. Like there's fertilizer plants similar to it. But the one thing that'll be nice about this is it is, there's a significant investment for the co-op, trying to make sure we're here for the future. Um, our co-op, um, has roots back to nineteen twenty-eight. Actually Spencer County Farm Bureau Cooperative was the first, one of the first co-ops in, in Indiana. It was organized in nineteen twenty-eight. In two thousand and seven, the, the local co-op here all combined under Spencer County and became Superior Ag. But again, Mark, the, the, the legacy goes back to the original Spencer County company of the co-op. So we want to, want to keep the co-op relevant, be able to serve growers well into the future. It's a big investment for us, um, but we're, we're excited to, to make the investment on the Indiana side and in Spencer County. So. I'll take any questions you have, but that, that kind of covers, covers the overall of what we're looking at.
So their, their conveyors, I guess, they're, they're open, your overhead conveyors?
Um, so the, there will be coverings over it, but it is open as far as the receivers that come from the barge and go into the building. Everything in the building is covered and all the loadouts coming out of the building is all covered. So, yeah, the, the receiving part is, is open, but we'll have a cover over the elements off of it as it's going into the building. The timeline, I didn't mention that, but we, we expect to start construction, uh, doing dirt work and a lot of the concrete work between the end of July and have a lot of the concrete done by the end of November. And then a lot of inside work will be done as far as framing and stuff in the building. Um, but we're looking at probably completion date around the, the first of April of twenty twenty-six.
So you already purchased the property?
We have purchased the property. We've, we actually purchased the, the interest in the LLC that owned the property. There was some benefit of doing that with permits that they already had. So, but it's wholly owned by the co-op. We did that in assembly. We're asking for a, a ten-year abatement program, which is.
Do you have any, any kind of cleanup there or you?
No, we already did some phase one environmental. I mean, we're, our, our biggest thing is we'll be using existing fill. Um, that was part of our requirements within ours as far as the, the, uh, building in the floodplain so we don't adversely affect the, the floodplain there. So there's plenty of fill there and be moving around to make it all, all work with what we have there. But that's a part of the plan right now.
You know how much property you own there?
There's about eighteen, it's between seventeen, eighteen, eighteen or seventeen.
Pretty good strip.
There's probably, I would say usable, it's more like twelve or thirteen, but I think the total, the total property is close to eighteen.
They had a settlement basin there. Does that stay? Will you guys be utilizing that or is that gone or ready?
Settlement basin is still, it's still there. It's still there. And then while runoff plants will have, or outside runoff, they, they will start to drop to go to there.
All right. Any other questions for Richard? When we go to vote here, just to be transparent, I will, I will abstain from voting here because, uh, you know, I wholesale, or I wholesale some fertilizer, fertilizer out of the casting terminal. So, uh, but I do support this, guys. I mean, and I support, it is going to be good for the farmers, other community, but come down and vote. I will abstain. Just a small conflict of interest there, but anyways, but I know Richard's up for any questions y'all want to answer or any other concerns we have.
It's one of the concerns I have with uncertainty with AEP and then some of the stuff with AK Steel. We're going to be losing a lot of assessed value there. And this will take another big hit for that area. Um, you guys kind of thought into anything about that? No, AK with their somewhere farm that they're building outside, they didn't ask for an abatement. My biggest concern is we have ten employees going to be doing, I mean, what's kind of your input or concerns or what, what do you feel like you have on the positives of doing abatement of this significant size?
So it's, it's a significant investment. A lot of investment is, is the facility itself and the equipment that's there. But it, it will service growers in, in, in the needed area as well as the surrounding areas here. Um, we do anticipate adding, adding staff. I mean, we're looking at probably a couple of, of, uh, salespeople, um, and probably total of, some, there will be some transfers of existing facilities in there. So I'm not saying we're adding twenty people, but you're probably looking at a net of about ten people, but one couple of salespeople. A lot will be on the transportation, distribution side as far as drivers that are going to send stuff out of there. All the positions, when I say ten, it's probably more than that from a seasonal standpoint, but we anticipate an, an increase of about ten employees as far as full-time and benefits. Um, and like I said, that the co-op is, is wanting to make this investment in, in Indiana. We had other choices, other things to be looked at, but we'd be on the other side of the river. And we, we would much rather be here and, and make the investment here and, and keep the employees here in this, in this area. So it's, I know it's not huge numbers and we don't have the, the employee base and the number of employees, but it, it does keep employees that are currently in Spencer County employed. It will add to that to some degree and it'll continue to, to keep the co-op relative for a long, for a long time in, in Spencer County.
Yeah. I guess that was just my biggest thing. It's like we have a whole bunch of small businesses that exceed those numbers that we haven't done an abatement for, for this much. And I am concerned with the assessed value and stuff for the next few years, especially with uncertainty with AEP. I'm a little hesitant personally.
I would remind you too, that the, the abatement that we had with the feed mill, that was a twenty-four million dollar investment to start the feed bill, feed mill. Um, that one, the, the abatement was a big help in that piece. And we're coming to the end of that abatement. I think we're on year eight. Next year will be year nine. So it's, we're, we're, we're stepping up. We're the full, full tax base on there and, like I said, we're, we would appreciate the consideration and the help, but we, we do understand, we need that, that tax revenue as well as what some of the things are going on and happening in the county.
I think one of the important things with this project, guys, like that feed mill, both of these large-scale projects, when you look at it, they're seventy-five year lasting facilities on there. Primarily, this is like a feed mill, all concrete. These are giant concrete facilities. Um, and you should expect to have the under-tax rule for quite some time. On there, I think that's probably one of the good things to look at is, we talk about longevity of that type of facility we're looking at here.
Yeah. There's some different style of fertilizer plants. We could have grown a, a, probably a cheaper route and done more of a fabric type style building. This is, this is a more of a, a long-term investment that's going to be a forty, fifty year investment here in, in, in the community and for the farmers. So we are, we're trying to be all right to be here for a long time.
All right, guys. Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
I think, go ahead. Sorry.
My concern is the length of it, especially, I don't mind helping out and I'm glad they're here. I'm glad, I think it's going to be good for our community.
Yeah, I, I think.
But you're talking about a ten-year abatement and, you know, a lot of the equipment and stuff will be depreciated dramatically at the end of ten years. And, uh, the environment, the financial environment's different today than it was even two years ago in Spencer County. And our citizens have been hit really hard with tax increases in the last two years. And so we're all in the same boat and, and we'd all like to have an abatement right now.
I, uh, I, I appreciate everything Superior Ag does for the community. It's, it's phenomenal. I was talking to some of us earlier. Uh, everywhere you look, there's, uh, donor banners and there's always Superior Ag, you know? So, uh, we appreciate that tremendously. Um, we need to consider the past two years. I think we need to take some time. I, I don't think, I'm not ready to make a decision now. I think we need to possibly table this and do some number crunching because how do we, how do we give our residents a huge increase two years in a row and then turn around and just make it boom, okay, sure, why not? We need to do some serious thought and number crunching into this and, and see what we can do. I mean, we definitely want to help, obviously, as a phenomenal for the community and we.
Yeah. I think that's one thing that's different with the co-op than a lot of the business. There's a lot of places that growers can go to get fertilizer and get the crop inputs. A lot of those are extracting those, those dollars out of the community and they're going to, to these big national companies or to organizations that are even, even international type companies. But as a co-op, I mean, we are farmer-owned, we're Indiana-based and we do take a lot of pride in making sure that the, the money is reinvested in, into the communities here. Um, you'll see us at the, at the four H fairs and the events that are out there. I mean, we, 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 we try to run a, a good business, but, but we try to make sure we're very engaged in the community, both with ag education and youth programs and hunger initiatives. And, and so we're, we're doing all that we can to make sure we're not just pulling money out of the communities, but putting that money back into, into communities. So, uh, I understand the, the concerns and, and from a timetable, if, if you want to take some time and consider it, we're not in a rush. We are making plans and, and going to, going to build a facility here. But, um, the, the abatement would be important to us and help, but, but we understand what, what you're in and the situation that you're facing. And if it, if you want to, want some time to think it over or think about different options as far as the, the timetable for it, we're, we're not opposed to any of that. We do want you to, to think that, that if, if we weren't a local co-op based here in Indiana, this facility probably would end up in a, in a different part of the world, in a different state. So we, uh, we really want to, want to have it, have it here.
Are you, you got something you want to say?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of leaning towards maybe, uh, you know, not, not abating the whole twenty-two million. Maybe let, let something pass through. So we got a few million added to our tax base right off the bat. And then go ahead and take, you know, we did that at AK Steel when they came. We, we only baited ninety percent and ten percent of that value came right on through and helped us out quite a bit. And I thought maybe something, something in that order with, with you guys, you know, I want to help too, but I'd like to add a little assessed value to the, to the pot to, to help with that, what has happened negatively the last two years with, with AEP and Cleveland Cliff, you know, where we lost, you know, we lost a hundred million dollars assessed valuation twice. So.
Unfortunately, we can't make up the shortfall from ADP.
I know, I know. But I'm saying it, it made it.
What we're doing is it's.
No, but to the public, but to the public, it makes it that.
At least it's a step in the right direction.
We, we have something.
Like I said, we, we understand your.
We want to help both sides.
Concern and, and we, we want you to do what, what you can, but it's what it's fair and good as well. We, we want to be, be here for the long run and.
And we want you here. We want to help, but maybe, maybe not the whole package right off the, you know?
Yeah. We got to find out a way for both sides to win.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we.
And, and I, I just kind of think of it as an employer side of things. If, if you cut your employee salaries, you know, ten percent for two years in a row and then all of a sudden you donated, you know, a hundred thousand. And, and I, I just gotta think of, as an employer side of things, if, if you cut your employee salaries, you know, ten percent for two years in a row, and then all of a sudden you donated, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to some, some charity. Wait a minute here, how's that, you know, so, yeah, that's.
Do we wanna make a motion to table this?
I would like to make a motion to table.
You all come back next month, and we'll, we'll, uh.
I've got a lot of questions and give you more information.
Would that be fair with you, Richard, if we table it, and then you came back next month?
Yep.
And we'll have it, we'll have the details worked out?
Yeah, and if you're in need of information or want to ask questions, you can. Richard, Richard, yes.
I've got, I've got your number, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, uh, alright, someone wanna make a motion to table this for Robert D? Alright, Brian's second. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, and hearing everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And aye. Alright, we'll, we'll definitely get, we're not, we don't want y'all to think we're like picking on you, we're just in a, interesting times.
We're kinda in a rock and hard spot.
Three years ago, things would've been a lot better.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get something worked out for you, and I'll, Dave or somebody will reach out to you before then. Alright, that's got that. Uh, John, RJ L Solutions.
Good evening, council members, welcome to be here, um, for the record, Jonathan Blake, RJ L Solutions, with Principal Officers at eleven twenty-five Warthaw Avenue in Terre Haute. Uh, even earlier this evening, I presented the Spencer County Economic Development Plan Draft to the county commissioners. Um, this is just the draft, um, we're, we're taking, uh, comments and feedback from the council commissioners over the next thirty days, uh, as well as from the public, uh, to, to finalize the plan. Um, really, you know, in the interest of time, I won't be respectful of everybody coming this evening, but, you know, the plan really represents over a year's worth of work, including engaging, uh, various stakeholders, businesses. Uh, residents, nonprofit organizations, healthcare professionals, uh, and businesses just like, uh, Spirit Valley. There's no doubt that Spencer County is facing, uh, some real headwinds coming up, uh, with the population decline, with limited custom options, aging infrastructure, uh, and then the eventual closure of AEP Coal Fire Rockport Plan. But we also have some unique advantages, uh, including our location, our natural assets, strong tourism industry, and then you're committed community leaders like yourselves. Um, this plan really sets out a, a, a strategy to move forward and create opportunities for growth. Over the, the course of the last year, we've held, uh, nine focus groups, again, with business owners, healthcare professionals, educators. Uh, we have over seventy residents, and many of you participated in the community forum back in the, uh, Spencer County Youth Community Center earlier this year. Uh, and then we conducted a community point survey, and we should have over four hundred and twenty references, twenty, twenty-eight to the exact. We heard, uh, pretty strong consensus for the community, both from the surveys, the focus groups, and the community forum, uh, you know. Topics that were brought up that were concerns were divided into, uh, school districts, uh, and the potential impact that that will have festively. Uh, lack of unified countywide vision, uh, among all of the entities, uh, limited availability of services and industrial jobs, and then, um, just coordination of government. Uh, top priorities that were identified, uh, in the plan, or through the public engagement and then made into the plan, uh, include development along US two-three-one. Uh, expanding the riverfront, uh, as well as port infrastructure, and then adding additional housing options. Infrastructure improvements were also a, a key topic of, of concern and prioritization for the county, uh, good for our sewer access. Obviously broadband has been expanded, uh, virtually everywhere in the county, uh, but cell service was listed as a, as a primary concern, as well as affordable housing. Um, we did do some competitive benchmarking as part of our analysis, so we, we looked at three regional counties, so three counties within the Southwest Indiana Development Corporation district, or, uh, region. As well as three non-regional counties, but those three non-regional counties were identified because of their similarity to Spencer County, either population, annual budget, um. Economic structure, geographic characteristics, or, uh, local industries, so the three regional, uh, benchmarks were varied, there's some county counties, and then non-regional, uh, which do in part, and ground counties. So, leading up to page thirty-six of the document you have in front of you, uh, it's really all the background work that was done, and the analysis that was taken, uh, into consideration. Uh, page thirty-six really sets out the, uh, mission vision, uh, and then the strategic framework, if you will, for the new strategic plan. Um, the, I won't read the mission vision to you, but, you know, essentially, you know, really focusing on being transformative, uh, understanding that we have challenges, but that we also have unique opportunities because of our location, uh, and natural assets. Out of the plan came three strategic goals. Um, one, halt population decline by creating reasons for people to live, stay, and invest in Spencer County. Two, raise median household income to meet or exceed the state average, and three, proactively prepare for the closure of AEP Rockport Plan, or the transition to some other power, whatever that may be. Uh, including workforce transition and the modern personification. So those are the kind of the three overarching goals that we, uh, set out in the plan, uh, based on community feedback. From there, then we developed five strategic focus areas that will help address those or help achieve those goals. So first being intergovernmental collaboration and modernization, so strengthening the leadership capacity, transferring the line of policies across the county. Uh, one of the things we heard is, you know, going from, uh, Dale to Santa Claus, or, or somewhere in the county, uh, people don't know. Who services water, or, you know, who, you know, provides sewer service, or, you know, what the, what the regulations are from one community to the next. Um, zoning was, was brought up multiple times. Um, and so, from the development community, those, those create challenges from residential, or from resident's standpoint, those create challenges as well. Um, infrastructure, uh, it was the next strategic focus, so really focusing on, uh, investing in critical infrastructure, like water, sewer, broadband. Uh, and really is to support site readiness, uh, for future investment, uh, business growth and community development, so really, um, getting the, the infrastructure, uh, ready for, uh, private investment, just like, uh, AK Steel is doing down the road. Um, business recruitment and traction, that was something that, um, was really, um, from, from the public, uh, a very clear, uh, missing component, um, in, in Spencer County. Uh, and so the community really wants to see more of a proactive approach on recruiting businesses to come there, so, you know, when we talk about businesses on, on Spirit Valley, um. When we wanna talk about businesses like them, what adjacent industries or what adjacent businesses could come and feed off of them or support their operations. Um, same thing with, you know, AK Steel, there are opportunities, there are businesses that are adjacent to them that, um, either use their product or create a, a product, but then AK Steel uses some of their products. Uh, you know, bringing them here, but it's, it's not just about chasing smokestacks, in fact, chasing smokestacks is, is the old, old way of thinking. Um, so really, it's being innovative and, and really, uh, attracting businesses that wanna invest in the community, wanna bring to paying, uh, high-quality jobs here, uh, and be here for a long time. Uh, business retention and expansion was another concern, so this really, you know, once the businesses are up here, we can't forget about them, we need to really, uh, invest in them long-term, so. Everything from the modern pop shops, uh, you know, small business Saturdays, uh, you know, really investing in them and creating opportunities to help them, uh, either grow their existing footprint, or. Uh, maybe fix up a building on Main Street, or, um, you know, invest in some new workforce development program that'll help bring in, uh, new employees. Uh, so that's, that's really important, removing those barriers, uh, to workforce participation. Uh, and then the final strategic focus area is community growth and development, so enhancing the quality of life, um, you know, investing in the riverfront, uh, investing in those, uh, vibrant community centers. This plan does not rest squarely on the county's shoulders, this is a plan really, the communities need to, uh, you know, embrace, there are gonna be action items that are gonna be, uh. Important for local organizations to, uh, take and rock with, but really, the, the plan is the county's, uh, has, has a strategic overarching, uh, vision for what Spencer County, uh, wants to be and should be. Um, so today is not, you know, the end, today is, you know, really the start of the implementation. Uh, what we asked the commissioners to do, uh, earlier today was take this under advisement, review it over the next thirty days, I actually had an email, uh, written, ready to send to all of you and commissioners. Uh, with a PDF of the document, uh, so that you can review that, um, I've also asked Mac Web, or Commissioner Web, to, uh, make sure that we get it on the web, website, um, so, probably tell you all about this as well. Uh, I believe they're looking to, uh, take action on it, their second meeting in, uh, this is January, so, second meeting in July. So at that, at the end of, uh, that thirty-day period, uh, we'll, we'll ask the commissioners to adopt the policy, uh, as a guide for Spencer County, uh, and then that will really signal, uh, the next step of, of implementation, but. If you have good answer, any questions you might have, I know you haven't had a chance to review it, but I wanted to get this in front of you this evening, and give you all time to table it, have it all together.
Alright, so, so some of these, I guess we don't call them action items yet, but. When your board is developed, that's when you're engaging people from your municipalities, uh, to be on the board.
So you're talking like the Economic Development Authority?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so I know the commissioners are still working on getting members from some of the local municipalities on that board, uh, but yeah, really, it will be incumbent upon them to be active. And help support the, the overarching goals of the.
And then you also have working candidates that are out in rural areas.
Yeah, 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 it's gonna be important to get a cross-section of the community, make sure that everyone is represented.
Great, great question. The, uh, the commissioner just took this under advisement, guys, till the, uh, till they're being set for the team, so. Yeah, I think we could probably do about the same thing, really. So you guys want feedback here?
Yeah, yeah, welcome, welcome feedback, uh, like I said, back on page thirty-six is where the, um, the focus areas, so as you look at the document, there's. So if you look at, say, page thirty-eight, focus area one is intergovernmental collaboration and modernization, underneath that is a core objective, so basically, what are we trying to achieve? Uh, and then underneath there are various strategies, underneath the strategies, there are, are specific actions, so we, um, you may have heard me talk before in a previous meeting that, you know. These plans, uh, strategic plans can come in many different shapes and sizes, um, sometimes communities want us to drill, drill, drill down even further from these and, and really get specific. Sometimes communities say, hey, we, we've done things before, we, we just want a higher level approach, we'll take the, the, the nitty-gritty details, uh, you know, ourselves. Uh, here we went kind of middle of the road, um, really just trying to give some, uh, guidance on, here's the actions that will help support the strategy, that will help, uh, achieve the focus area, so. Really wanting to, you know, engage that, that, uh, the, the authority, wanting to engage local communities, uh, obviously the council, the commissioners, uh, to really, uh, dive in and, and execute the, the strategies for the plan.
Alright, guys, any questions for Jonathan? Is that, is that your logo up here?
So that was the, that was the brand that the commissioners, uh, adopted for the Spencer County, uh, Economic Development Authority.
Hold this, don't, don't miss the boat.
So, so that, so that came from, uh, our, our marketing team, RJ L's marketing team came up with that. Um, what we wanted to do was we wanted to pay respect to the history of this here, uh, particularly with Santa Claus, Indiana, uh, and Hollywood, so you'll see the green and, and the red kind of reflect, uh, those colors. But we also wanted to, uh, really focus on the fact that you are on the river, you have, uh, an asset that most communities in Indiana don't have. Uh, and so, the don't miss the boat, uh, is kind of the playoff words, um, and the Spencer County Economic Development Authority really is, uh, intended to. Be the body that is moving, uh, Spencer County forward from an economic standpoint, um, and really, you know, kind of set the stage for us. So, that was, that was what the commissioners have adopted, uh, based on our recommendations, but.
Ironic that the presenter before you is doing something with the river.
Well, and we, you know, you mentioned that, uh, they had met with DNR, we helped coordinate a meeting with them at DNR, because they're having some issues with permitting, and.
Now, they're not gonna need a, I didn't permit it, there's no emissions, right?
Well, they, they were, the conversation with DNR was much, uh, should I say, much easier than any of us expected to. We went into that meeting expecting, kind of, we're still here, and we went into that meeting expecting DNR to say, no, this is the rules, and we're not, we're not wavering. We got in there, um, and there were probably sixteen of us around the table, uh, and they said, yeah, this, this actually is not a, not a negative impact, so I didn't think we're gonna be okay. So it was, it was good to just get all of the, uh, individuals that make those decisions in one room, and it was good for them to see, um, Spirit Valley on that as well.
Alright, thank you, Jonathan, any other questions for Jonathan? If not, guys, we don't really take action, it's just, uh, keep this booked ourselves for the next month, don't leave it out in public somewhere, look over it, you got questions, reach out to Jonathan, and, uh. We do appreciate you coming in and presenting this and showing us what you've done the last year, looking forward to, you know, sit down and study it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the man?
Thank you all.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, guys, uh, going back just a little bit here, um, we gotta take care of an appointment from the, uh, Lincoln Heritage Public Library. Um, Lisa Hawes is currently the county council appointment to the Lincoln Heritage Library Board of Trustees, her term expires May thirty-first, and she'd like to be reappointed for a second four-year term, um, that would end in twenty-twenty-nine. Um, Alissa has the, uh, paperwork on this, uh, usually you just need a simple, uh, majority vote to make this happen, so look for a motion to, uh, reappoint, uh, Linda Hawes Futter to the, uh. Hawes Futter. Hawes Futter, there you go, thank you, me and David confirmed that.
Yeah, Linda Hawes.
From me too.
That's Brian's wife, yeah.
Okay, Hawes.
She was a pun, love a pun.
Yeah.
Hawes Futter.
Hawes Futter, okay, good deal, uh, do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Uh, alright, Brian Grawley makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Dave from me second, so you discussion board, hearing none of everybody's favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, that's got that, um, down here, I don't have, uh, Andrew, I had to be out of town, so we don't have legal report, I have no business. Um, we have, uh, two things here, uh, on the health board, um, we don't really have to, they're gonna be coming probably next month to, uh, to get this, since that immunization grant is no longer there. They're gonna update their, um, fees for immunizing people, um, so, um, it's, it's been steady, I guess, since nineteen seventy-nine oh-three, and it, it, uh. So it's under a, um, resolution, an ordinance, so they're gonna bring that forward, get it up to date, and the, uh, they've approved it at the health board meeting, they're gonna, to bring it in the commission meeting next time, and then, uh. We'll need to look at that ordinance, so, um, just something to, to be on our radar, that they're gonna, they're gonna make a few changes, uh, to the, uh, to this, their fee schedule. Uh, even though the fee schedule is in, is in here, uh, that will be updated, and we'll have to, uh, take, um, action on that, or next meeting that ordinance. Nineteen seventy-nine. Nineteen seventy-nine, well, it's worked for a long time. It's actually Linda's dad, he got, uh, a signature on his commission, Adrian.
Beautiful.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, then the next thing is, uh, Leila's here, I think she needs some more autopsy money.
I do, yes. I know, right? Uh, we, we are out of autopsy money, I have another to pay, and then I have four more after that to pay, I've just received a bill for one, and then I have four pending bills.
What's one, what's one cost, Leila? What, one op- op-?
I can't give you an accurate cost assessment for this one, because it varies per case, so it could be as low as eighteen-something, and as high as endless, depending on the case.
Top's three thousand?
So, right now, the, the two that I have are twenty-five hundred apiece, so I, one of those will probably be three thousand or higher, because it was an infant case. So they send off a, a lot, the state requires a lot more for those cases, so, uh, the current one that I have is twenty-five fifty, and then I have four additional that I'm looking to be that cost, one of those will be higher.
So you need twenty-five thousand?
Probably twenty-five thousand to accommodate those, and then the end of the year. Probably twenty-five thousand to accommodate those and then the end of the year. We're, we're doing a lot of cases right now. So we have sixty-one reported deaths for the year, thirty-eight of those have been courtesy costs, twenty-three of those have been case investigations, eleven, I think eleven of those have been our autopsies.
So we need to advertise twenty-five thousand for our autopsy.
Please. And if we don't use it, then we can just send it back to the general fund.
Yeah, we spent forty thousand last year and we don't, so.
Yeah, we didn't use all that though, we didn't use all that.
Okay, I was just putting the budget number, okay. All right, I'd, Mike, we'll look for someone to make a motion to advertise twenty-five thousand for autopsy expenses out of County General's one oh-seven corners budget.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions for the corner?
Or the gentleman?
Dave, go ahead, sorry.
I mean, it's, it's part of what the government has to do.
Do business.
Keep things legal and, you know.
Yeah, there was years we've had really good ones and there's years we've had really bad ones.
Yes, unfortunately with the rise of the drug.
Do we go down to Evans Road to the new building, is that where they go?
So the new building is not accessible just yet, so we're back and forth between Bolting House Mill and Van Buren Chapel in Christie and the new, or the old Vandenberg County Mor, which they have upped their fees to three hundred dollars instead of just a hundred.
I meant to ask, or our autopsy being formed in the Vandenberg County's new building?
No, not yet, no, we're still in the old building with the new records.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, guys, to advertise the twenty-five thousand. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, so that's all the business I have tonight?
We got the wheel tax.
Yeah, we got, we're, we're going to have to, at the next month meeting, the Brian is your, is the all-star.
Jonathan.
So what, we are going to have to investigate the wheel tax on, to, if we don't, we can't apply for community crossing grants, but we have to September first to get it done. So I'm going to get with Andrew, call Andrew tomorrow and see if he can go and get us an ordinance that the other people use, and then we will discuss the rates at the next meeting, and then we will probably get adopted in August.
Okay, just curiosity, how much money are we talking about that we could get from the grants?
One point five million.
Okay.
Plus every, I think if you, I think I, when I looked at it.
Multiple times.
Well then, but, well, and then you got to look, we got, the county got one point five, the Rockport got some, Dale got some, so I think when I added all of it, it was about two point four million dollars that we got through the county.
In one year.
In one year.
Okay, add this five dollars fee, what, what kind of monies are we talking?
Last time we looked at it, it was like three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so, I mean, the alternative is don't charge this fee, but the residents are losing out two point four million dollars.
We can reduce the seed tax a little bit, how about that, guys?
We could, we could.
Reduce the seed tax a little, we could do that, you know, I mean, kind of.
Right.
I mean, instead of.
But, I mean, that's just the way I'm visualizing this, is the residents are going to spend three hundred thousand dollars to, in the, to get two point four million.
Well, yeah.
To apply for two point.
To be able to.
The people that get hurt are the people that have semis, because you got to set that at a different rate, it must be, it must be.
Lowest it could be.
Forty dollars or something, you know what I mean? So, but like, there's, if we set it at five dollars, there's twenty.
One car.
You know, everybody had one car in the county that could drive, I mean, it's probably, I don't know, there was, there was rejection one time that was somewhere around three hundred thousand, and that's divided between us, municipalities, a bunch of different things. So I don't think our part was actually much over a hundred and twenty-five thousand or something, but our hands are going to be tied, so it's, it's just something new, I want to put Andrew on it for looking at it, you know, in my opinion, we would go with the lowest rate of the five dollars annually, you know, you could go all the way up to forty if you were really broke and didn't have, needed the money, but we're not in that position, we manage our money well, so.
We, years ago, this came up, this, in a state level, and, and we lobbied and we said, hey, we got our wheel tax, we call it county option income tax, ceded or whatever, and we, we put two million dollars a year from the citizens into our road system, and then they kind of let it, kind of let it go, now it popped back up again.
I read, there's a, there's.
No other counties need that.
Two pages of amendments to this bill, I mean, so it probably was pretty controversial.
I know.
And I got a call into Steve Bertels to make sure that the information I got is exactly right, but we have to do that since he's our rep, so anyways, so that's, we'll, we'll get that kind of prepared and.
Take that two million over our population, that's a hundred dollars for every man, woman, child.
That's, that's, try that.
And here's this wheel taxi going to take on chicken, we're going to five dollars.
That's what I mean, just looking at it and visualizing it.
It'd be bad if people have too many cars. Dave, Dave's going to have to let some of them old specials go, ain't you, Dave?
Just don't register them.
Only got one car.
You can take the plate from one another.
I got two vehicles too, so, all right, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Steve, I'll, all right, any other, anything else anybody else needs to bring up here tonight while we're still in session?
Oh, I know, what about, what about this stupid credit card that they announced? I mean, would you be willing to ask Andrew if we could, if we as a council and a fiscal body could enact an ordinance that no county funds can be just spent through a credit card? Maybe you guys aren't against, I mean, you're not favoring that, I don't know.
What, what's the ordinance now? What are the commissioners that?
Commissioners, commissioners are going to get a county credit card.
For each, like, department?
I don't know.
No, every department head can have one. Right, Melissa?
We don't, we don't want to, what's the, what's your, what's your?
We're going to spend more money with a credit card than we are this way, I guarantee you that.
So, can, can I interject there? So when I buy things for the corners office, whether it be office supplies or furniture, paper, or inks, whatever, I go to Amazon and I put in my own credit card information.
And get reimbursed.
And then I get reimbursed, well, that's a big no-no, because then it looks like that I'm doing something that I shouldn't be doing, but also I'm doing this on a county computer in my office, so that credit card information, my personal credit card information is subject to, you know, if it doesn't get wiped clean appropriately, then it's subject to be gotten by anybody else that comes after me or taken by a spammer, just saying.
So you can't just order online and put, not, I mean, have a bill to your department?
Not with that.
You can, you can invoice it to your, from Amazon. Well, I, I don't know about Amazon, but there are a lot of.
No, you can do it from other entities, yes, but.
Have you ever paid in sales tax when you have it on your credit card?
I don't, either that or me being business guy, I use it under our federal credit card, so that it is tax exempt, and then I take that money and I put it back into the home.
I'm not saying that this credit card idea is not the way to go, I'm not saying it is the way to go, but I do agree that our employees should not be using their own money to buy stuff for the county and then wait to get reimbursed. Like I said, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't, I don't, I mean, if my employer wanted me to pay for something and wait to get.
Are you talking about supplies or?
Yeah.
We've spent millions of dollars every week here, I haven't had a credit card before, how do we do that? How do we do that?
Like I said, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying, as in, you shouldn't expect your employees to pay for something and wait to get reimbursed.
So I can send you, how about I send you out the ordinance and the, things like the guidelines, policies.
Yeah.
We could all look at that.
It's, it's designed mostly for travel, because that's where, so right now we're seeing that a lot of hotels are no longer accepting checks, so then when they get there, they're kind of stuck, so, and it's hard to get, use your credit card and get the taxes done, so there's some issues going on with that, I think it's designed mostly for travel, but there are instances when you do have to pay for something out of your pocket, like what she's saying. With Amazon, I can help you, whether you can invoice, but there are some that you cannot, so the way that it's designed is it's by department, if you, instead of me being responsible, if, like, if Leila wants one for her, she's responsible for her whole department, so she's sending someone for travel, she can issue the card, but then she's solely responsible for making sure it gets to accounts payable and make sure it gets paid. So, but I can send all that out to you and you can review it and then discuss it at the next meeting.
But I can totally see where Dave's coming from, it's a way of supplementing the, you got to get approval before you spend the money, now it's spend the money and then.
And once the money's spent, if it was spent illegally or whatever, you'll never get it back, it's gone, because you, we can bring it here and talk to our lawyer and he'll say, well, they provided a service or they provided, we got to pay it, so it's gone.
That's what I'm saying, I can, I can see.
And you're not going to get it from the employee back.
Right, right.
Nobody cares no more, I don't even, I don't get to point, I don't even care no more neither, I really, just spend, 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 you know, one of these days, the whole doggone thing's going to come crashing down one of these days.
I still got to stay with it.
Stay, stay in our budget, yeah.
Correct, and there's, you know, the guidelines with traveling, I, I think they were kind of getting away from the meals, so, because really once you spend that, it's kind of hard to get that back, but it's worth the hotel, I guess, registration fees, that kind of thing.
When I went to those conferences, we would get a, we'd get an invoice from the hotel, send to us, we'd bring it in here, me and Jack, they'd cut a check, we'd take our check along when we go up to Indianapolis, here's a check for a room.
Melissa says they won't do, they won't take a check anymore.
Some hotels don't, we're having a few, so what I'm doing is calling now.
I guess things have changed.
But other than hotels, registration, everything's in advance, I can still do all that. Registration is in advance. Absolutely, you know.
Well, I mean, today's point is, we're just kind of losing control, because if you, if, if we give everybody a card, then they just go out here and spend it on whatever they want, then.
There's nobody going to try, nobody got time or, 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 it's just a few dollars.
Right.
Like, what if you go out to eat your. Put it on a county card, it's just a few dollars, they won't, they don't miss it, nobody's watching it, that's.
Well, what if somebody goes out and eats a hundred dollar meal, they're only supposed to get twenty-five, how you going to get your seventy-five dollars back? That was, I mean, that's my thing and the whole thing, but. The commissioners have already approved it, adopted it, and I think you can order your card.
If the commissioners not approved, have they ever said no to anything? No, never, they don't, they don't.
Turn the meeting and then talk back?
They don't, go to a meeting, ever say no to somebody, I'm going to come and ask them, oh, we, we, we need all this stuff that everybody asks for.
So, on to the asking for the money to pay for, who, who's paying the credit card bill then?
It'll come, it'll be submitted as a claim like a normal, you buy anything from off speedo, you send me a claim where the department head signs it and then we pay it.
And it reconciles the credit card statement to a receipt that it was spent, spent appropriately? That the department had?
It's going to have to be the department head, because I can't maintain.
You aren't going to know.
No, I'm going to pay whatever's on the claim.
All right, we'll hire another person to manage this, yeah, hire another person to manage this, seriously.
I got it, I got it.
We're not going to do that.
Okay.
More than work.
All right, any other comments? Do pass that out, I think we'll look at it, I'll talk to Andrew and we'll see what we got.
Don't get it, nobody's in favor of it, I'm done. It's just a shame.
I make a motion, are we adjourned this meeting?
All right, do I have a second? I'll second. Everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.